Call the roll.
Bird.
Here.
Steins.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Hulseth.
Here.
Williamson.
Eric Ingsstrom.
Here.
Okay, number two, approval of agenda.
Any changes, your honor?
I don't see any changes this evening.
Second.
Call the roll.
Steins.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Hulseth.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ingsstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yeah.
Okay, number three, presentation of petitions and other communications. A, appoint and swear in second ward counsel, second ward city council person. So we've, obviously, we tabled this last time to give David an opportunity to be here. Welcome back, by the way. And so I'll turn it over to the council. Oh, yeah, there is a letter, a support letter brought in. Gina Daly in support of Sarah. And same as the last, there was one on the desk before Cory, so. Note of that. But anyway, I'll turn it over to council.
I will just say it, we have two really good candidates, so it's a tough call. I think both would, either would do a good job.
Yeah. David, since you weren't here, did you have any questions you wanted to ask? We had a time where we were asking questions.
No, I think I'm gonna watch the meetings.
Um, well, I've reviewed this, so I would like to make a motion to approve Cory into our city council.
There, away, as a practical matter, could we vote in favor of the candidate rather than nominating a candidate and voting yes or no? I kind of feel bad voting no, you know what I'm saying? Go around and say the last name.
Gonna take a motion in a second.
Right, I mean.
Whatever we do.
You have whatever discussion you want, but, I mean, so, motion's made, second it, then you can have a discussion and go around and say, here's my thoughts as to who I would support.
Was there, we have a motion.
So.
Motion from Terry.
How did you want to do it, or what? I don't know.
My suggestion was, instead of voting yes or no on a particular person, when the vote comes around, say the name of the person that you would support. I don't know if that's as a practical matter.
Thing, he's, he's just made a motion to support Cory.
Right.
Someone seconds that they are. I mean, I don't see the difference, because if you vote no, you're saying you don't support.
Well, it's, it's, it's different. In my mind, it's different.
Okay.
Is that possible?
You're cool.
No, I, I mean, I think you have to have a motion, have it seconded, and then you vote yes or no. I don't know.
Okay, it's gotta be, that's why I wanted.
I know it's tough, I get.
As a practical matter, I wanted to clarify that I couldn't do it that way.
Right, okay.
That's, that's all I wanted to make.
We have a motion due every day.
I will second it.
Okay. Uh, call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Hulseth.
No.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ingsstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Steins.
No.
So it was.
Forty.
Four to. Okay.
Cory.
Cory, okay, so, next step is, I'm gonna swear in our next councilperson.
Yes, I, I don't know. I just get back from, I'm really wanting pictures, okay? I can tell it's, you know, it's like, everybody runs to that's behind.
Major right hand or P S B, I in your name, I Cory Henson, do solemnly swear, solemnly swear that I will support the constitution, that I will support the constitution of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the constitution of the state of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Do the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of city council.
Of the office of city council.
In the city of Boone, Iowa.
In the city of Boone, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations, sir. I need to stop and sign.
But then we have wheels.
Sorry, you're gonna sign right there?
Yes.
Thanks.
I wanted to fit an awkward, not to talk.
Thank you.
And you'll get a copy list.
I think we can spend this.
What have you seen?
We're doing a lot.
I'm very, I'll do one more, fix it, Cory.
Thank you.
Yeah?
What do you need me to do?
I just don't want.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Next, next up, public hearing for the consideration of proposed fiscal year 2023 budget amendment. Were there any written comments?
No, sir.
Any public comments? Not this public hearing is closed. See, thirty-one oh eight, resolution approving fiscal year 2023 budget amendments.
Make a motion.
Good.
Second. Call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Hulseth.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ingsstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Steins.
Yes.
Okay, D, thirty-one oh nine, resolution one, approving the competitive criteria and procedures for the disposition of certain property located within the southeast Boone urban renewal plan area. Two, determining the proposed submitted by All Iowa Homes, Inc., satisfies the offering requirements and declaring the intent of the city to convey the property to All Iowa Homes, Inc. In the event that no competing proposals are submitted. Number three, ordering publication of a notice of competitive bidding and soliciting competing proposals. And four, fixing date for a public hearing on the proposed proposal to enter into a purchase and sale contract with All Iowa Homes, Inc., related to the conveyance or property in the southeast Boone urban renewal plan area.
Move.
Second.
Call the roll.
Hulseth.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ingsstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Steins.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Okay, number four, report of standing committees, policy administration. Let's handle that.
Uh, I can take it better.
So here we're tonight to discuss the job description for the recreation director. There was a P and A meeting at the last council meeting where they requested some changes. Those changes have been made. And this is the final draft of those changes. If you have any questions of what those changes were, I do have a copy of the job description, and I can point out where they are, or I can actually just do it. In the general summary, down at the last sentence where it says recreation employees, it was requested by the P and A that we add if necessary. If you go down to plans and directs the operation administration, the C's recreation director. Here, it was asked that we add if necessary. In addition to the one, here where it says collaborates, they wanted Boone Recreation Board taken out. That was removed. In the second page. Under interviews, it was added right here, assist citizens group committee with development of a recreation center proposal. And then, under that, right here, under the first one, the purpose of the recreation director is to manage and administer recreational programs to include a recreation center, parentheses, if necessary. That was added. Why did we add that language?
Uh, that was a request of the P and A, Councilman Steins had brought that up, and the, and the committee had voted to make that change.
Why?
Uh, just because the recreation center doesn't exist yet.
Yeah, but it makes it sound like it never will. What, I, that language is not conducive to getting this done. I, I don't like it. Should be a provision in there for the rec, rec center, because now you, you're gonna blindside whoever this is with additional responsibilities that are, if necessary, what does that mean?
Well, they're gonna be involved in disposal in the first place, so they'll be.
I just said, I think that language sounds like it's not gonna be built. And it, there should be a provision there, say, upon completion of, or, or whatever of the recreation center, these are some of the listed responsibilities that they would, they would entail.
Just putting one sentence in, saying.
Yeah, it, it doesn't have to be anything. In the event that the new recreation wellness facility is completed, the responsibilities that recreation director would include but not be limited to, and then list out the things that you took out.
I just think it sounds like we're sidestepping an extra.
And that's not a, that's not a good look.
Oh, and that's not the intent.
Yeah, I find what that is ever added sometimes.
Okay.
Because it conveys exactly the reality and situation.
Yeah, and all it does is reflect what you, you put, if necessary, there's what I did. I just.
That's, that's fine to.
Oh, do you have other copies for?
Yeah, here, everybody.
Yeah, that was the discussion, the reasoning that we had, anyway, which jives with what your suggestion.
It, it just reflects the if necessary paragraph. And that, that way, it's clear, so that whoever applies for this job knows that recreation center gets done, this is what they're gonna be responsible for.
It's simpler, it's a clear, yeah, it's a simpler way of saving it, so.
And some of the language that was in the end of it mentions not limited to, you know, we don't know yet if for sure how that job will go, or what they'll be responsible for, but that kind of covers that as well.
No, this clause below additional responsibilities, that's exactly what I was envisioning too. Okay, and that's, you know. Yeah. I don't think we need to have another P and A committee to discuss, so. You guys take a look at it.
I, that's the only thing that I saw in that when I read through it.
I'm gonna finish what other changes.
Sure.
Okay, so, under here, judgment on page, on just the second page, we took out intellectual ability and just started it with judgment.
And that would be all the changes.
Okay.
So then, if you want some changes to what I have put in the packet, then I need some direction on what that is.
Is everybody okay with the change that Perry would like to see? If that's okay, we'll just make that change.
Um, not sure about number four, is it, well, should we? They'll have in their board of recreation board, should we rename that?
Yeah, you can.
Name number four recreation board. And we just sat out, that was the same, that's the same.
Yeah. We could, you're gonna have, if the well, if the wellness center, when the wellness center gets built, it'll have to have a board, volunteer board of directors that guides it.
Yeah. That was one of those things, that it wasn't a thing that existed yet, so it was hard to put it in the language, but if we puts it on.
Page of the recreation board.
Just, yeah, it's just additional responsibilities.
Correct.
Wellness.
But didn't.
Honestly, it ran.
That happened.
Yep.
Oh, I understand.
Taking out wellness centers, what you want, taking out. I take that.
Yes, instead of board of volunteers, board of recreation, just recreation.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, recreation wellness center. Or just take out the wellness center. Just take out the words wellness center.
Yeah, yeah.
And just use. And you want, and you want this additional responsibility at the end of the job requirement, or end of the job description, or where would you like it? Right, the best at the end. Right?
I would assume the end.
Well, you have entry, the last part is the entry requirements.
Yeah, it should be, what is?
I move that for.
Operations.
Essential job function?
Job functions, um, at the end of.
Right, at the end of that.
I mean, that would. I don't know, it actually kind of, right above other duties as apparent, oh, oh, that's knowledge, actually above that section there, right above that section there, after assistance citizens group.
You want it after this, send citizens group committee with development of a recreation center proposal.
The general, that's.
And you want additional responsibilities, and you want it put in there just like it reads on this sheet, other than the, yep, take wellness center out.
Yep. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we can do that. And you want us to finalize it, or you want us to bring it back once again?
Finalize it.
Say let's finalize it, if, yeah, we're just.
Going over, you're good with additions, and that'll be the thing.
It's fine.
Yep.
Okay, before we move on, if I could, one other thing in regard to this, we've talked up here previously that you want staff to move forward with advertising and this everything. Since that conversation, there's been some changes made at the state. Quite frankly, they're not good changes for the community, in my opinion. But we have not got anything from the state to really explain this and how the effect. I think the only thing that I can say tonight is the cap on growth at three percent is really the only thing that I understand at this point on this. I know Greg at Ames E D C, as well as the league, is working on some language on how this affects us. Do you want me to wait until I get that to see how it's all going to affect us? Or do you want me to move forward? I just, I want to present you the information so that you're well aware as we move forward that there are some changes at the legislature that could affect us. Didn't they already ding us for a hundred thousand from the state that you had to come up with, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and I went for this.
This is additional, this is.
This is, in addition.
Yeah, it's every, every fiscal year, the revenue growth is capped at three percent, and there's a formula that calculates a levy rollback.
Right.
Levy reduction to reduce that amount. And the calculation on that is what you're trying to figure out exactly.
That and how the homestead.
Yeah.
They're, they touched the homestead, they touched the military, so.
I don't think it would hurt to maybe hold off a month, maybe get some answers.
Thirty would, I'm looking for some direction from the elected officials.
Wait and see. I mean, a month's not gonna make or break hiring this.
I would prefer the clarity here.
Right, we've got time.
But if we.
I didn't hear you.
I would prefer the, getting clarification first.
I would agree.
Yep.
Okay, we will wait for clarification before I move forward. We will finalize the job description, so it's done.
Sure.
We'll wait until we get some clarification on what the state did.
While we're on the topic, the other thing that was in the bill is reducing the number of special elections for bond proceeds just to November.
Yes.
General election each year.
Yep. And we'll give a report to council once we actually understand all of it, and get all the information. One just step.
From what I understand, they're still trying to figure it out. So. Oh, the motion. Motion to.
Yeah.
Language of the job description as amended.
Second. Call the roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ingsstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Hulseth.
Yes.
Thank you, policies and administration.
Appreciate it.
That's what's.
Thank you for your insight.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Okay, uh, see, next up is public safety, David Byrd.
I'll report this time, your honor.
Utility committee, Terry.
Um, no report, I'll put it in.
Okay. Economic development, Terry.
Um, we had a pretty busy week. Since May ninth, we attended V C D, moved, Boone County Economic Growth. Uh, they talked about gross wind technology there. Pretty exciting, this is a sewage treatment process using algae to treat the water. We visited a plant in Slater a couple of years ago about this, and they're moving this technology to here in Boone, in the old Glanada Lakes facility. Out there, it's pretty exciting what they're gonna be doing, they're, they're, they're on the cutting edge of this. They do algae-based aviation fuel production, they're gonna, they're exploring that possibility. If that takes off, that's gonna be huge, and the base will be here in Boone. So, that's pretty exciting news. Another thing that, this happened at the utilities meeting, but I threw it into E D because it kind of affects E D. T D B I B, L L C are planning a plant expansion. In their industrial park, this is recycling green technology, where they remove rare, rare earth elements from the recycling materials. We have a few ducks to get in our row with a wastewater treatment plant, and some limitations, some explanations there, but that's exciting, too, that could be a real boom for Boone, and they could, you know, their growth potential is there, too, so that's good. On May tenth, that was May ninth, on May tenth, Brenda, Bill, Brenda Dryer, and myself made a trip down to Perry to talk with David and Stephanie Sheffer. And Dave Junior's here from there, and they own a restaurant, the Tin Pig, down in Perry. We went down there, they bought the building right across the street here, the old Athena Building, and they are planning on putting a restaurant in there. We, Ames E D C filed for an emergency CAC grant for them, hundred thousand dollars to get the building sealed up, we offered them B D F, and our five thousand dollar new business grant to help them get started, and their timeframe is, what do you think? Gonna get it sealed up first, then we'll talk about it, right? So, and the roof's in bad shape, and it's got, it's got some issues that needs, need to be addressed immediately to salvage what, you know, before the building gets in too bad a disrepair, but this is exciting news, a new, new restaurant, they want outdoor seating, we got, there's a lot of exciting things, you have anything to add, Dave?
Not much. I, we've only had it three weeks now.
Seems like an eternity, though, doesn't it?
Pretty quick.
Yeah, it is moving real quick, which is great, so, but we talked about, a little bit about timeline, but we thought probably eighteen months, right?
Yeah.
And that, so sometime next year.
So you're gonna be right across from here?
Yeah.
So we'll just run across and get our food and be here.
That's exciting news, too. I also attended the open house. But it was an unbelievable turnout, there must have been two hundred people there plus. It was really nice to see the community support that effort out there, very nice facility. Chad's done a great job expanding that company and moving it forward, so it was really nice event, Dave Colhane, Brenda was there, Jennifer was there, so they did a real nice job. And I was, I represented, and the city bill was unable to attend. Today, at the E D meeting, we discussed the application for the home improvement program here in Boone, right? We had fourteen applications that we reviewed, Councilman Byrd, myself, and Brenda reviewed. We have a, had a total of nine, ninety thousand dollars to hand out, and out of the fourteen applications, we were able to grant eleven of those. For a total of, well, we're five dollars short of the ninety thousand, so. So that, that's exciting, that, that should start right away, and a lot of these have to be done, we have to get money out the door in June, right? So they have to be done by June. The twenty-second and Lynn project, should we get, swing here if it ever stops raining?
I'm sorry, before we move on, could we have a, E, E D recommended that they present the applications for the, the approval of it for full council, so we need a motion for full council to approve the applications in that program, sorry.
Still moved.
Second. Call the roll.
Ingsstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Steins.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Hulseth.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Thank you for that. I would imagine the eleven applicants would thank you for that, too, as well. They ranged anywhere from forty-five hundred to ten thousand.
Wow.
And we were able to do eleven of them, so that's.
Nice, impressive, awesome.
The twenty-second and Lynn project, well, should get into full swing here pretty quick if it ever quits raining. They got a muddy mess out there right now, but that should be picking up speed here pretty quick, I think they got their tax credits for the, the retirement part of that, right?
They closed, yes.
They closed, yeah, so we're all right there. We still currently have five B D F projects underway downtown, three on Story Street, one on Keeler and one on Eighth Street, so that's in the works, too. Also, we would like to discuss a change in B D F. Um, this, and this would require a resolution, but to allow grants, this is in conjunction with Main Street, some of the things that, recommendations that Main Street made, to allow grants for awnings and signs. Up to fifty percent, fifty percent of the cost up to ten thousand dollars. So that would help us with that signage downtown, get some, a little more modern stuff going on, so we'd like to change the language in the B D F. Res, or B D F standard, if we could, but I think we need a motion to do that, right?
Yeah, and it would be just for awnings and signs, yes, so move it.
That would be a good, oh, that'd be a good step, because they did make a, a point of saying, there are really a lot of businesses downtown, but the lack of signage really is.
And that's what we're trying to do, the city's trying to.
Not drawing people.
Best and, and move this along, so.
That's why we. First step, you know, this is a really good step to go.
We may need an organs change for that, but right ahead, and if that's something you approve, then we can take it from there.
We have a second on that.
Yep, second.
Okay. Call the roll.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Hulseth.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ingsstrom.
Yes.
And our next meeting will be June fifth at five thirty, and we have a couple other exciting things to discuss then, too, that we'll bring to council then. That's all I have here.
Okay, thank you. Uh, number five, department reports, building official, Dave. Uh, finance officer, Andrea.
Uh, no report.
A city attorney, Jim.
No report.
Uh, director of public works, Waylon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't have much to report, other than we're seasonally doing some work, I don't know if you guys have seen the mix hold up notifies about sewer repairs, most of those are mine, or our staff. Last two weeks since we met last, we've done five pretty major sanitary sewer collapse repairs, or not quite collapses, close to collapses, got them repaired. Got one, we did one fire hydrant from an accident that was hit last winter, we got one more fire hydrant to do for citywide, and then we're gearing up for that.
Thank you. Hey, engineering, go ahead.
Uh, first item up there is proof to many drinking water, S R F planning and design loan application. To go back a little bit, your member council has previously voted to increase the, the water and sewer rates because of the five million dollars improvements that we need to do with plants. Two point five at each, at each plant, this is for the clean drinking water, so this would be the water plant, so this is the initial stages of approving the planning and design that will work with S E H on, so that we can receive money to pay for, for those fees. So this would include the existing water treatment facilities, including the replacement of existing water treatment limeslakers, and replacement of water treatment plant building roof. So I'd need a motion to approve this application to apply to S R F.
Still moved.
Second. Call the roll.
Henson.
Yes.
Steins.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Hulseth. Elsabeth? Williamson?
Yes.
Ingsstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Okay, so the second one is for the wastewater, clean water. Uh, SRF, same thing, planning and design loan application. Uh, design bidding and construction improvements to wastewater facility, including the me- mechanical bar screen. Great removal replacements, sludge facility, decant line and lift station improvements. As well as wastewater treatment building roof replacement. Remember those things were specifically in the wastewater study that SEH completed for us a while back. So we're just following that study and the recommendations. This again is the second loan application, but this, this one is for wastewater. I need a motion to approve.
Understand that this is just. Not an expansion, but maintenance items that we have to do.
Yes.
All the firm maintenance. We are, yeah, we are under the gun here. I make up, I have.
I'll second it. All the roll.
Sainz?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsabeth?
Yes.
Williamson? Ingsstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
So the third item here um, is the fire department project that I'm going to turn over to Chief Adams.
You bet. Thank you, sir. Uh, tonight we finally uh, have everything coming uh. Uh, to fruition with our fire department expansion. Uh, with the, the contract and recommendation from Pelts uh, architect to go to uh, award. RH Graybaugh from here in Boone of the contract for seven hundred ninety-three thousand, seven hundred dollars. And uh, it's resolution thirty-one twelve. Now entertain any questions. Added skin down? Yeah. Otherwise I'll look for a motion to approve. I'll make that motion.
Second. All the roll.
Mormon?
Yeah.
Elsabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ingsstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Sainz?
Yes.
Good. Anything else under engineering?
No, sir.
Thank you. Uh, public safety, Chief Adams.
Yes, Your Honor, just one thing is uh, our annual pancake feed is this uh, Sunday, the twenty-first. Uh, from seven till noon. Stop on down, grab some paint.
Be there.
Yeah.
Okay, next up, Chief Weeble.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, we have some more additions to our uh, civil service list. Um, as we are continuing to try and build these two spots, we're continually interviewing people and testing people. So we have four names add to the civil services.
I'm moving.
Why I didn't start it?
I got, did you get a second?
Call the roll.
Elsabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ingsstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Sainz?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Thank you. Hopefully we'll have some uh, swearing ins the next month or so.
Hey, next up, city administrator Bill. Thank you. My first item is resolution thirty-one ten. If you remember back in December, we signed a six-month contract with Concept Works. To help us with the uh, articles and things we've done. I think you've seen the, the work on that through E- notify. That contract ends uh, the end of May. We were, uh, we approved up to twenty-six hundred dollars per month for that six-month contract. I will tell you, the first invoice we got um, after the first three months was twenty-nine hundred for the three months. Uh, where that he was authorized up to like fifty-four hundred for those months. So he's doing good work. You, I'm assuming you've seen the articles. If he has not reached out to you as a councilperson, you had to do an article, be where it's coming. Uh, he's still working on those. And uh, we're doing some other public relations as well. So uh. This is a contract uh, with Concept Works for a year beginning July first. No increase in price, up to twenty-six hundred dollars each month. And I'll entertain any questions. Otherwise, I'd like a motion to approve the contract with Concept Works.
What was our initial contract? How many months was?
Months.
Six months?
Want to try it out.
Okay, and this is.
For a year here.
On our fiscal year and we have budgeted money for it.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Can I?
Yeah.
Second.
Before we vote, just uh, what are some things that they've done besides the interviews that really stood out to you?
Um, well, one that's coming out, it's uh, that'll come out uh, next week that we've been working on is it's actually Public Works Week. And there's an article about that. Um, he's put out articles on uh, other things that maybe correct some information. As well as there's something coming out for law enforcement week that's this week as well.
Thanks.
Yeah, call the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ingsstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Sainz?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsabeth?
Yes.
Okay, my, excuse me, my second item is, so items two, three and four were previously discussed. Council as a result of the assessment that we had down from Main Street. Um, I've been getting uh, some emails about moving forward to some of these things. I think the only thing that I got consensus on from this council at the last meeting was when we go to paint the lines downtown, don't uh, paint the crossways one. To illin- delineate, you know, the, the full space for the parking. So these are some of the other ones that are on here that uh, if you want to move forward with it, I need some direction from full council. So the first one is remove the designated parking for Boone County Transportation. Now we're hurt is by US Bank. If that's something you wanted me forward with, you just need to advise me. Or if you're not ready to do anything, we can certainly.
Never seen them use it, so.
You're a. The time I've seen it is used when they have that big crane there for a long time.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah, get rid of that.
Rid of it, I'd.
I'll make a motion to remove that parking space designation.
I'll second that.
All the roll.
Ingsstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Sainz?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Number three is uh, engineer evaluation of Story Street for ankle parking on the east and parallel on the west side to Story. So obviously we'll require an engineer that will cost us money that was not budgeted. I don't think it's gonna be that big, but it's not in the budget. Um, and if this is something that the elected officials would like staff to do, then uh, you can please inform us.
Well, I'd like to see, I'd like to see it done. I, I don't know how many parking spaces they will pick up. That'd be nice to know.
Yeah.
I was, but I, I think it's gonna be substantial.
No removal wise, does that make a difference for you on where you're gonna put it? You know, cause you get onto Keeler, is it Keeler Street?
I think we're only talking story.
But Keeler already has it that way angled and then parallel on the other side.
It could. The uphill actually plays more.
Okay.
Attraction and stuff like that. I've taken a pretty good fight over there on that side of the street uphill. I, I think with the equipment we got, we'll be okay. I would like to get. If, if that was a section of town, we did purchase a new box blade uh, that can push snow out of an area or out of an extra section of street. As long as we maintain fourteen feet between the. The diagonal parking and the horizontal parking, we can carry that snow out of the area.
Okay.
Blocks too, potentially. It's, that's just thought, I guess.
Can we talk about this a little more on? The rationale of why we're doing one side different than the other. People, we were kind of saying people don't. Like the parallel parking or they find it more difficult?
You'll get more spots, that's one thing.
And with the angle, so why we don't have room to do angle on both sides? Is it kind of like Ames Main Street, which is really?
That'd be, it'd be, uh.
If you drive down Keeler, you'll see the difference, you know, right in front of the.
How wide.
Go and then, you know, the Oaks Real House there.
It's one on.
One, it's exactly what I was talking about. I was sitting out there the other day and I was thinking, this is what we were talking about and it, it works well there.
By the library, they, they start angle parking and, and I know I park by the library pretty frequently and it's been nice to have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll pick up some spots, but angle parking on both sides.
You'd have to go one way.
Yeah.
It'd be downtown.
It'd have to be one way.
I don't think we can do that.
I know.
No. We're not ready for that, no.
No.
Okay.
I think you're gonna learn, you're gonna lose the turning lanes the way it is.
Yeah.
So. Because it could be that thinner section for both.
Turning lanes. Sounds like we have, let's look at it.
At least want to know how many spots we'd pick up on that side of things and give them a little.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is an expense uh, motion to promote this study, the engineer study.
Okay. Call the roll.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Sainz?
Yes.
Yes. Elsabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ingsstrom?
Yes.
So the next item that was brought up is discuss creating an ordinance for commercial vacant buildings.
Yeah, Iowa City has one that I looked at briefly. I know that there are other cities that have it. Essentially, it's a registry of commercial buildings. Who owns them, how to contact them and they pay uh, a certain fixed fee every year. When they're vacant, to be on that registry. So it helps know who owns the building and who you can get ahold of if you want to buy it and that sort of thing. That was one of the recommendations.
Yes, my question was, what's the purpose of this? It is more of a registry?
Well, and to disincentivize having empty commercial buildings too. Because there is enough, there is a financial burden with that.
Cause there's a lot of question downtown. It, some of these buildings, we don't know who owns them.
It's very difficult.
It's very hard to get ahold of it, like the old iron horse.
Right, if there's, if they're out of state or.
Been a kind of a legal mess right now and you, you can't.
So we don't have that information currently is what you're saying? To.
That's not that's readily available without some serious research.
Just what there was on Beacon really, you know?
And so this would require.
Yeah.
That information to be shared and reported.
And rather than just having a vacant, having the ability to try to put somebody in a.
It would be them.
Oh, yes. You do have that information on Beacon and you can determine. That corporation is, who their agent is and those things. By going online.
You'd have to write them a letter. You know, that is.
That's, yeah, that's true.
So we could direct staff to look at a couple of sample ordinances and see if they have any recommendations.
Yeah.
This is something that would give key to, to disincentivize somebody just leaving it open for years and.
Years and years, yep. That's one of the, one of the things that it does.
Do you remember the Iowa City one, what it is?
I didn't see them enumerate what the fine was. They said a fine, which is a, or a fee, which is established elsewhere in the code. And I, I wasn't able to dig that far. So that's something we have to look at too, but.
Yeah, maybe make it, if, if council so chooses to direct staff to do that, maybe we start at PNA. Before we bring it to full council, that falls under policy and administration.
Sounds good.
For me, I would have to see that.
Okay.
The motion to direct. Yeah, the motion to direct the billing official to look into potential new ordinances for vacant buildings in, downtown Boone.
Second.
All the roll.
Henson?
Yes.
Sainz?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ingsstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Okay, then my last item uh, as a result of the assessment that we had, I was having a discussion with Councilman Mormon. Uh, in regards to uh, downtown businesses and. He brought up an idea that uh, maybe council needs to look at, looking at one seventy-five, one seven C two. And one seventy-five. Point one eight. C three, and I refer you to uh, number ten. First one on D, where it says the exterior of the front of a building must be, and we're talking about downtown here. The exterior, or is this, is this citywide, correct?
It's for the thirty percent.
Yes. Yeah, okay. So the amount right now is thirty percent on the front. Of the information that we got from the assessment and some of the discussions that have been reported. Is there any interest in the elected officials to change that thirty percent? I think it covers most everything other than the amount. If you read the whole thing, fear of. The front of a building must be constructed of at least thirty percent outside facing of a clay material. Or approved equal. And the approved equal in there helps us with how, what we actually. Through PNZ and then council, what we would decide. But as we go through this process and it appears we're gonna be investing quite a bit of money in downtown. Is this something that you want to look at to increase that thirty percent for new construction?
Your thoughts?
Anything downtown?
As a percentage goes.
I, I think some of that language, we have some support, but I think. I think that like, I think that thirty percent is a little light. And it should be anything that is visible from Story Street. Because if they put, if they slap thirty percent of brick on the front of that building. You get both directions.
Yep. Well, and just to maintain uniformity more, since we're talking about all of downtown. That any change would affect all of downtown.
Well, I mean, we have a, we have a case study in the laundromat where they did the thirty percent, but siding was falling off on all sides of the top of. You know what I mean? And so if you're like a hundred percent.
I don't know if we can do that. This is, this is gonna be touchy with the agreement that we have with DG, right?
We're, this is. Speaking of ideas.
Yeah, I know, I, I think it will be.
Um, I'm in conversations with Dollar General and have expressed uh, expectations. And those conversations are ongoing. Uh, but again, this would be, not to dismiss what Jim is saying, but this, this is. The entire downtown, not just Story Street, if you so choose to make any changes.
And that, it, you're talking about all construction, right? New and, and existing?
New.
New.
New construction.
So see, I mean.
Just new.
We're basically talking about that lot.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's, I mean, we're zeroing in on that lot.
So.
And any commercial district though too.
Yes. Out south, right? Or is it just Story Street?
Like downtown, which is represented by that.
Down, okay.
So see, I. I'd like to see that up.
Right there.
The percentage.
Right, I think it needs to be addressed.
I just don't know if we, a hundred percent. Ye- yes, I'd like to see what they built Nevada built downtown. That was a hundred percent. It's a hundred percent break building there.
If you say seventy-five, I mean, a hundred percent, I mean, you might as well.
Yeah. But again, our, if I could remind you what the ordinance says, you mentioned brick. Uh, what the ordinance says, the exterior of a building.
For other approved materials.
Could be.
Claymationary material. Split block face or approved equal. Up the determination of the PNZ committee and the council.
Have leeway at the PNZ. Cause what's that? There's leeway at PNZ, what you just said. If they look at the exact materials that they're proposing. Cause I guess this qualifies.
Thirty percent though, I mean, they have no- nothing else to guide them.
No, what I'm saying is if you say a hundred percent, then they have leeway. What constitutes an approved material?
Oh. Yeah, that's true too. I think they'll, they'll convert it from brick to stucco, what they'll do.
I guess I'm not clear on whether we can mandate this for DNG.
Before.
Because we've already.
Yep.
Right? I mean, so I don't know that.
We have a purchase agreement.
Purchase agreement.
We have not voted on any site plan or anything like that.
Okay, so we.
Already approved the site plan, then that would.
Yeah, that, that'd be.
Okay, so we do still have some leverage there on, this is what we expected and we have been real upfront from the beginning.
And again, this change of would be for the entire downtown because of the assessment and what we're looking at. The, the amount of money that we are, I'm assuming the city of Boone elected officials are gonna vote to improve downtown. So this would, this ordinance would im- if you decide would increase that thirty percent for the entire downtown. For projects that may be coming as we continue to go through Main Street.
And when you say entire downtown, so it's not just Story Street. Because if we talk Story Street, we're talking one local.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting just Story Street. I'm suggesting the entire, the higher.
I think put it all down.
I think thirty percent isn't enough. It needs to be some tell.
And I think.
Under section, you go to a hundred percent. By, we, we do all of downtown, that means all that metal and all that wood and stuff that they put up there can't be put up there.
But it's new construction.
So new.
Newly construction.
Yeah.
New construction.
New construction.
Are we going to approve BDF grants with that?
Think that needs to be looked at too, probably.
Well, that's what the, the guy said from the assessment to, wasn't a. Item back in the day, it shouldn't have been put on the.
Well, how much new construction are you going to have downtown unless something happens like F and Green space? Building berms down, that'd be.
Well, I mean, there are a couple of spots in that zone up there that. That are vacant, that should have a building on a whole lot. There's, let's say, uh, Family Video, something like that, you know, one of the new building there. They have a lot of on the street.
Right.
The building over here.
I think from my standpoint, this goes to standards, what you expect downtown.
Yeah.
The building over here though is not new construction.
No, no, but potentially.
For next to it.
So is this going to cover rehabilitation? That's my.
If they demo and rebuild, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, tear it down and rebuild. Oh.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I mean, you could make it apply to.
Renovation.
Significant renovation.
I mean, I, I guess I'm for having higher standards for downtown because if we're going to pursue being a Main Street community. That's going to be needed.
That's on a, that on a bullet point, that the city has done this to improve the standards of new building.
Right, so we have to look at that, that how do we start moving that direction on? So this is, this is one step. The question is, yeah, the percentage of, of what's reasonable.
You want a table and about to come back because everybody's kind of got a different idea, I think.
I think we have to do something. I've just not.
Yeah, I mean, I think you go do a little research and figure out what you want rather than just.
Land on something.
Yeah, where, where were you leaning? A hundred percent?
No, I'm, to be honest, I didn't have a um. In mind, I mean, it depends whether you want to go to fifty or you want to go to seventy-five.
I think it needs.
Think hundred might be fifty, hundred could majority. And keep in mind too, that when you make that percentage, you also have to factor in what's Jim brought to my attention, our windows and things like that.
Right.
So where it doesn't have to be a hundred percent. I, I mean, it could be seventy-five percent. Um, and again, the ordinance says of, I keep mentioning the, of equal.
Right.
Of approved equal.
Yeah.
So that helps us as well, if I'm wrong, that because it has approved equal. Then we can work with them.
And come to us for approval.
Yeah, so I, I guess what I'm getting at tonight is. Is that thirty percent too low for the elected officials? Now, again, I want to stress, I'm talking about the entire downtown. Do you want to improve that thirty percent to fifty to sixty to seventy-five?
And I think we need to do this pretty rapidly.
That's what I think too.
With DG in the mix here, if we're going to do it now.
You're cool.
Okay.
We need to do it now if you're going to.
I think we want to.
I would, I would say that I think we should go to sixty percent and exclude window.
I'm not sure I understand what you mean.
Yeah, if windows are part of the front of that building, they're excluded from that sixty percent. They're not part of.
I mean, it, windows isn't mentioned in the ordinance.
Well, in some of them, a window, a window doesn't count, like you obviously can't break your window. So if you have a building and twenty percent of the building is window. Then you are a hundred, and you say a hundred percent, you have to do brick for the eighty percent that is not window.
Right.
Is what.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Dave, do you have anything on this? Any comments or anything as the billing official?
Um, no, necessarily, when you say in a material that is. Be nicer. There are so many new materials out there for building. One of the things you're worried about is, you know, being possible. There are so many materials out there that we see now, um, there's a lot of choices for different façades, things that appear to be masonry.
That look good. The point being, I think you're making correct, that look good, that could be acceptable downtown.
Right, the full brick stuff.
Stuff like that.
So I think there's some options there without. Uh, people out of, you know, do something down.
But, and then back to what Kyle, we have to be a little bit judicious about it too, because there are some of those that maybe on paper would look good, but in reality. Not tech. So. But. You guys got to do our due diligence.
I say it, it's got to be at least sixty, sixty percent.
Say seventy-five. I, I'm in seventy-five or higher.
Seventy-five?
Okay.
I, I'm okay.
With whatever the council decides.
I'm okay with seventy-five.
I'm good with that, because I think we want to.
Building, or are you talking the front or?
Again, the ordinance states the front.
Well, I think if it's corner lot, it should be the entire building.
Street adjacent?
Yeah.
Maybe not alley.
Right now, it's the front of the building, the face of the street.
Right.
So would not include. See if.
Corner lot and entrance.
Say a nice brick front inside.
I would say, yeah, seventy-five percent on street adjacent sites. I like that.
There you go.
And I, I can.
But.
And new construction.
New construction.
Construction.
DG builds on that lot. You're going to, if it's, the only balls that would be seventy-five percent would be on Seventh Street and on Story.
Yep.
You would have a wide open one coming up Story Street between the Historical Society and.
Well.
I, I think if it's visible from Story, it needs to be brick.
It depends on how they set the building up on the lot.
Right, that's true.
That's something that needs to come through our processes and conversations that I'm having with them.
So do we just say entire building and not worry about street basing area?
You could say public right of way, not excluding alleys, if you didn't want to.
Right away excluding alleys.
Yes.
There you go.
Yep.
You got that?
And you're talking about BDF for rehabs, maybe that's something you can look at.
I think we need to review BDF and how we, how they're going to redo their front of their building. If we're, if we're going to do that for this, for new construction and renovated old construction needs to kind of meet that criteria as well.
We want to bring our downtown up, yes. Uh, if we want the downtown to.
If you want the downtown to be cohesive.
Mm-hmm, right. Well, I don't, if, if I could interject, how about when we have our ED meeting on June fifth, I'll bring that forward on the agenda. To, we'll further discuss changes to BDF. I know you all approved uh, windows, or I meant, sorry, hunting and, I think, but we could look at that as well if you wanted the next ED meeting.
And when, when we actually change the ordinance, we can just do it all at once?
Yep. Yeah.
Well, the, yeah, the ED, uh, I mean, the, the BDF would be different from the zoning.
Oh, sure. Yeah, but I'm saying, uh, changing the BDF ordinance can include the signs and stuff if you have to do.
Yeah, we'll see if that's an ordinance change or.
Yeah.
I thought we concluded it.
So it was an ordinance change, okay.
Okay.
Well, uh, so I'll make a motion uh, that we increase the amount of uh, uh. What is it called?
Facade.
Facade, uh. Mandated to seventy-five percent on uh, public right of way excluding alleys.
For new construction.
New construction. I'll second that.
Call the roll.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsabet.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
And I will, uh, we will, just going to do all the work and we'll try to get something, but there is, there is a three week break here from council meeting, so we'll try to have a first reading. For you at the June fifth council meeting, subject to Jim's time.
We're doing our best to work with Main Street and some of the. Questions that they made, so.
And this all looks good for our application when we go again.
Right, yeah, make a list of the things that we.
Yes, the changes.
Already done.
Okay, number six consent agenda, there are very items on the consent agenda that you'd like removed and discussed separately, and if not, any motion to approve.
To approve, second.
Call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsabet.
Yep.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yeah.
Science.
Yes.
Okay, number seven ordinances, A, third reading. Ordinance twenty-two eighty-seven to allow the city of Boone, Iowa to change the stop sign regulation on First Street and Delaware Street, chapter sixty-five, section sixty-five point zero two four five. True proof.
Second.
Call the roll.
Elsabet. Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second. Call the roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsabet.
Yes.
Okay, B, first reading ordinance twenty-two eighty-eight to allow the city of Boone, Iowa to change the all train and off-road vehicles ordinance by amending chapter seventy-seven, section seventy-seven point zero four seven.
Can I ask you what this is?
I, just changing the age from sixteen to eighteen, based on the state law.
Okay. That's, that's all I need. Didn't get that far in the pack.
It's a change that was made that. Perfect.
And, yeah.
Still moved.
Second, call the roll.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsabet.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Okay, number eight, I have no comments. Number nine, any council comments this evening?
I just want to welcome our new councilman.
Welcome.
Joining us.
Thank you.
Uh, number ten, public comment items not on the agenda. Larry.
I've been wearing that. You know, I've been here a long time. Well, the city council needs to work on downtown here. We know a lot of markets have all been abhorred back in fifty. But it's been boomers. But one thing, city council needs to hear all the trees out down now. The warning, you walk down, I, that's, I was the one that walked downtown, I was like, I was like, geez, geez. Need, city council needs to walk down and turn it, walk the lights, six, six, three, look at all that. And you make the sign. I'm hoping maybe you're going to take money or federal money, that's what I agree. It costs a hundred million dollars, that's costing. The building needs to improve because it's not good. I, I got much else to say, but you need to get downtown, tear the trees out, the trees, come around, but it's been there thirteen years from I joined. They move and walk the cars.